Good evening and thank you for coming to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting. It is April 9th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is our custom, we will begin with the Supervisor’s monthly statement acknowledging that neither Councilman Ross nor Councilman O’Neil will be with us tonight. So we have a quorum and we’re going to just press on. This is the monthly statement of the Supervisor, March 31st, 2013. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the Supervisor during the month. The grand totals were: opening balance, $2,644,517.87; receipts were $2,351,775.46; dispersed, And I think that is the extent of the Supervisor’s report tonight. There are no amendments to it. And so, I would like to say the above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books at the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on March 31st. Is there a motion to accept?
Show move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Town Clerk’s Report.
Town Clerk Monthly Report, March 1st through March 31st, 2013. Total local shares remitted to the Supervisor as town revenue, $1,504.18. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for their spade and neuter program, $50. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $251.32. For a total, excuse me, state, county, and local revenue of $1,850.50. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sumacan Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook, Dier, and the period stays above in connection with my office. And that was for March. I just have one quick little announcement. I just want to remind residents that every year from March 15th through May 14th, there’s no burning. Burning is prohibited. And just to remind residents also, you are no longer allowed to use a burn barrel, burn leaves, paper, always trash. This is strictly brush. And Dutchess County right now is in a red flag warning. Even if we didn’t have the prohibited burning, it would be banned right now. So if anybody has a question, you can always call me to see if the ban has been lifted after May 15th. And that’s it. Still collecting taxes and water rents.
Good. Thank you, Sue.
You’re welcome.
Are there any announcements for the Board? Harry, do you have any announcements?
No. Want me to talk about the Highway Act section now, or?
Let’s wait till we get past this first section.
Yeah, you’re right. Okay.
And Brenda, do you have any announcements?
Just to remind everybody about the Arbor Day celebration here on April 27th, from 9 till 2, I think. From 9 till 2 in the parking lot, they’ll have free tree seedlings, a farmer’s market, music, Mill Road poster contest winners, and it should be lots of fun. And also, there is, these are just reminders, I think we announced these before, Daylily Day at Northwind Farms on Saturday, May 4th, from 11 till 2. And for more information about that, you can email northwindfarms@sitlink.net.
Thank you, Brenda. There, I have several announcements. Some of them are small and some of them have large import. And I guess I’ll start with the first, which is to say that the Dutchess County Agency Partner Grant Program has been completed. There have been applications by all of the agency grants within Dutchess County, and I’ve forgotten how many there were, but there were multiple grants by some institutions, some agencies, single grants by others. The total amount of funding request was $1,231,764 among those who received funding. The Community Development Agency Partner Grant Committee recommended funding in the amount of $705,000 for that amount of ask. So it’s $1,200,000. They recommended $705,000, and $705,200 was granted. Not receiving funding were an additional ask for grant funding from agencies, just to indicate the need expressed through this grant application program. An additional $1,897,608, and it, some of them, $665,000 did not receive funding. So this is to illustrate, I think, the needs within our county and elsewhere among agencies who are feeling the strain of the economy and the program that Dutchess County has attempted to meet some of those needs. We will be entering into a grant application with other municipalities for a similar program that is available only to municipalities in Dutchess County. This is one that’s been developed by Dutchess County Executive Mark Molinaro and the Dutchess County Legislature. And it will have an ability to dispense up to $2 million to cities, towns, and villages within Dutchess County who apply for and are approved for funding for shared services largely. They’re looking for shared services, grant applications, one that will be efficient, will save money for multiple municipalities, who will demonstrate new ideas, new ways of looking at doing business. No one is exempt. A municipality may make more than one grant application, so we could have among our departments five ideas and submit five applications for some funding. And so, I urge everyone to think beyond the way we do business now, because we’re looking at new ideas, new ways of joining our municipal needs and our municipal abilities with other local municipalities within Dutchess County. And some of them could be near, some of them could be as far away as Dover, which is the other end of the county. But if we have something that we think would fit for Dover and for Red Hook, we could apply for money and work out something together. So that’s the kind of thing we’re looking to do. It’s new. We’ve not done it before. This is a trial run for this idea, but we’re hoping out of it will come some real countywide efficiencies and some new ways of doing business. Today, Harry and Brenda and I were privileged to attend a scenic Hudson press conference. Wynt was there. There were many people there. It celebrated the closing on a property that I think they said was 168 acres of the Greg Farm. This has been the breadbasket of Red Hook, known for its fertile soils for many, many years. They have, up until now, not taken advantage of any of the purchase of development rights programs or conservation easements. But a third generation of Greg, Robert Greg’s son Jim and his wife Corina, decided to set aside the property that they have for permanent preservation. And so today, we met at Rockefeller Lane on a beautiful morning with lots of wind, but gorgeous mountains behind us, and viewed that incredible soil. And Jim Greg was not there because he is serving in Afghanistan. He redeployed in, I think it was December 31st. And so, it was our task to close on this conservation easement before he deployed in order to take advantage of USDA’s opportunity of 50 percent funding. So the partnership here was USDA at 50 percent of the value, Dutchess Land Conservancy is holding the easement and monitoring the easement, that’s their piece of it. Red Hook is in for 25 percent, and Dutchess County is in for half of that, and scenic Hudson came in at the other half. So we put together this very complicated package, under a lot of stress, thank you for your help with it, as always, under a lot of time constraints because Jim was leaving the country, and we had to do it to meet a USDA deadline by the end of the year and Jim’s deployment. If you will forgive me, I would love to read Jim Greg’s statement, because this may be the first time it becomes public on the air, and I think it really speaks to that family’s commitment over three generations of farming. Corina and I would like to extend our warmest thanks to everyone who helped make this conservation easement possible. It has been a long time in the making, and if not for the Herculean efforts of everyone at the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, the USDA, the Dutchess County Land Conservancy, the scenic Hudson, to bring everything together just before I shipped off to Afghanistan, none of you would be standing here in the sun, snow, rain, sleet, or fog, or whatever, whether you are enjoying or suffering today. I would like to extend particular thanks to Norman Greg and Sean Pratt, I’m sorry, who, for their excellent counsel to help ensure this land would both be protected and continue to be viable farm business. And to Supervisor Sue Crane, Art Collings of Dutchess Land Conservancy, and the staff at Dutchess County for all the hard work they contributed to making this possible. The truth is, no one would be here today if not for Carrie Watkins Bates of scenic Hudson. I cannot remember how many emails had a timestamp that fell during the hours that most sane people are asleep, and she never balked at early morning phone calls. Our family has farmed this land and enjoyed the recreation of swimming and fishing for decades. Thanks to the efforts of everyone here today, this land will continue to be a source of food, income, and recreation for generations. And that is Jim Greg’s statement from Afghanistan. And we thank him and the three generations of Greg family for continuing farming in The Dutchess County Economic Development Annual Breakfast will be held on October, this sounds terrible because we haven’t even gotten warmed up for spring, but save the date for October 17th, 2013. They are way ahead of us, and that will be at the Poughkeepsie Grand Hotel. The Dutchess County Land Conservancy is pleased to offer a two-hour course on April 29th from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. The course title is Conservation Easements and Subdivisions: What Works and What Does Not. And from our sister village in Tivoli, Katzbaum has a new spring newsletter, which features, some of us may not know her, but Joan Tower is a composer of renown. She is considered to be one of the most important American composers alive today. She is a Grammy-winning composer, and her works are performed around the world. She will be at Katzbaum with her dance troupe and a composition of her own on April 27th at 7:30. The program is called “The Violet Hour,” and she will hold a pre-performance discussion on Saturday, April 27th at 6:45. It’s going to be a remarkable evening, and we congratulate Katzbaum for including the wonderful talent of Joan Tower there. And that’s, I think what I have, just one other thing. I was totally surprised. I was invited to the Elks Annual Ceremony for Installation and Annual Meeting. And I went, and at the, in the middle of the meeting, they announced that I was going to be awarded Citizen of the Year for 2012 and 2013. I was, I know you’re going to har, this is going to be hard to believe, I was speechless. I did not see that coming, and it was very, very kind of them to acknowledge the work that we do here at Town Hall, and I appreciate it so much. And that’s all I have. So we have a very special treat tonight, because we have our Town Historian, who started out the day with us at the Greg Farm in the wind and the sun, and he’s still on his pins and ready to speak to us a little bit about Red Hook Bicentennial. Wynt Aldrich, how are you?
Thank you very much. I’m fine. Couldn’t be better because of the subject and the presence here at Town Hall at a board meeting. I want to first say, just about this morning, our Supervisor was as eloquent as anyone could imagine on the subject of what it means to have this fabulous farmland preserved, indeed to have it at all in town, and to have the generosity of the Greg family, so much a part of our future, as well as our present and past. And I just loved hearing that and being there. For the record, the Colina Farm also is going into protection now in the same series of transactions. And that’s a little closer to where I live, and I can’t tell you how happy I am about that, because Rokeby Road from 9G to Route 9 is forever, at least on the south side of it. It’s going to look as it does now, which is viable farmland, and beautifully put in shape over many, many years by Nate Colina. And now, through the commitment of his daughters, it’ll be protected by the same kind of easement system. As Town Historian, I have been hugely proud of the joyous manner in which the town entered into the spirit of the bicentennial last year, with the number of volunteers and a genuine commitment to having fun and celebrating community and heritage. And there’s no better example of it than this marvelous quilt here on your wall. Claudine Close, President of the Historical Society, will have an important comment to make about this in a moment. But first, I am privileged to perform a more official function, and as the final action of our bicentennial era, report to you as follows. The organizing meeting of the Town of Red Hook was held on April 6, 1813, in Henry Walters Inn, which stood where the mobile station now stands, the center of Red Hook Village. General Van Ness, an ancient at 71 years of age, was elected Supervisor, and the other posts were duly filled. These positions included Pound Master, there was great concern about bulls, rams, and male swine running loose and creating havoc. A half dozen Fence Viewers, the zoning enforcement officers and boundary dispute mediators of the day. Twenty-four Overseers of Highways, one for each stipulated stretch of public road. And Overseers of the Poor, who were to promptly meet with their Ryanbeck counterparts to proportionately divide the money and the poor belonging to each town. Finally, the town formally acceded to the state’s bounty program for the elimination of “wolves, bears, and panthers,” and for the destruction of the noxious weed Canada thistle. Close quote. So, as stipulated in the 1812 Act of the Legislature, I’ll read the minutes of that first meeting, April 5, 1813. The first annual town meeting of the Town of Red Hook after it was divided from the Town of Ryanbeck, held on the first Tuesday of April in the year of our Lord 1,813, where the following persons were duly elected town officers for the year: to wit Supervisor David Van Ness, Town Clerk Mathias Rowell, assessors, there were five of them, Peter Cantai, Nicholas Alendorf, George Shook, Henry Cooper, Jacob C. Miller. Well, there were five. We now have one, and I told Scott Hobson this morning that he’s doing the work of five. Five! You know, there was almost nobody living in Red Hook there. And I said, yes, well, I wonder if they had to go around in battalion strength doing their duty? And he said, you suppose they were heavily armed? Those were tough days. Anyhow, overseers of the Poor, Philip Boenstiel, Jacob Stahl, Collector of Taxes, Simon Hearnmanz, Commissioners of Highway, well, I prefer the old term Path Master, but clearly our new town wanted to go with new terminology. And so, the officer was, the officers were Commissioners of Highway, and they had three. Today, we have one. Terry Burke is doing the work of three. Cornelius Alendorf, Jacob Whitman, John Stickel. Constables, Jeremiah March, George Shaver, Larry Lewis. Pound Master, Nicholas Hoffman, he had to deal with all those wild swine. And Fence Viewers, don’t you love it? Peter Van Bentheisen, Jacob Hendricks, Dire Troop, Henry George, John Pitcher, John Hearnmanz. Six of them. And now, I think the taxpayers are very grateful that we have none. But what in the world do they do? Talk about a passive job, doing fences like watching paint dry. And 24 Overseers of Highways, I won’t read those names, but exhausted with their labors, the first Town Board meeting then adjourned for the rest of the year. I think we’re, it’s pretty clear that they had very important manners on their plate, as we do today, and I’m glad to share with you that glimpse of Red Hook just 200 years ago. And now, if I may, I’ll ask Claudine to say a word in addition to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with Wynt that the bicentennial was a fabulous event, with great support from the town and from the community, and we were able to unearth all kinds of interesting history. It was a thrill for me. One of the, there’ll be many bicentennial legacies, but one of them that I thought you might like to know about is during the bicentennial, we worked closely with the Friends of Alendorf, our landlord. And we found very quickly that there was quite a bit of overlap in membership, goals, administrative structures, and we, after working together very well on some of the programs, the two boards started to talk about the possibility of consolidating the two organizations to become a more efficient and stronger organization. So I’m pleased to report that both boards are working on a plan to consolidate the Friends of Alendorf with the Historical Society. It would be still an organization that holds the charter as a historical society, but would be able to expand its scope. And we plan to present this proposal to the membership next month. The plan would be that we would submit an application to the State Education Department and hope to complete the process by the end of the year. So you will be hearing from us as we go through the process, but we’re very excited about the possibility of having a new, stronger organization, and the name that we have proposed is Historic Red Hook. So stay tuned.
This is a legacy of the bicentennial too. One more like.
Exactly. And there will be more.
Congratulations. That’s wonderful. That’s great. Congratulations. Consolidation’s all around. That seems to be the buzzword of the day, and good for you. Good for you. Good for you all. Good for Red Hook. Okay. Are there any other public comments before we start? Yes, Chris?
I just wanted to say again that on the way over, we marvelled at coming down Echo Valley Road and into the village, which I’ve known all of my life, and what a remarkable, remarkable thing, after 35 or more years, Buddy and I have been in Washington, to be home for three and a half years, and to really look at democracy and be a part of democracy and how it works, how it works at the local level. This is the only way this country can survive and was founded. And I just wanted to say thank you to the Town Board and to everybody who always volunteers without saying, yeah, let’s go do it. And that’s Red Hook, and I think it’s just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Very nice. I can’t resist saying that I agree with you, that I have felt for many, many years, having been involved now maybe more than 15, that we cannot count on upper levels of government to help us. We must help ourselves. That’s my full assessment of my 15, 16 and a half years of work here. There are opportunities through levels of government, but the vision and the understanding of what we want to be, how we want to grow, what we want to become, what we want for our children, I honestly believe starts here. And so, I encourage, and the Town Board knows this, all of you to contact any one of us. We are all open to talking with you about new ideas and new ways of doing business that are efficient and economical and forward-thinking, that will make us proud and our children proud of Red Hook many, many years in the future. So thank you, all three, for coming, and thank you all for being here. And so, we’re going to get on with the Town Board meeting before I start tearing up.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is the issue of the Rec Park Extension. And Sue, I believe we’re close enough to 8 o’clock, we could open this. What do you think?
Sure.
Okay. Would you read the notice, please?
Sure. Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on April 9th, 2013, at 8 o’clock p.m. local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons regarding the proposed master plan for the Recreation Park Extension. The project proposes four new soccer fields, two new baseball fields, new picnic areas, a pedestrian trail system, an ADA-compliant bathroom, a snack bar and pavilion, and associated parking. The park expansion also involves the provision of water service and the transfer of an unneeded 0.58 acre parcel of land from the Water District for the town for pedestrian access use. The Town Board has reviewed a full environmental assessment form, has determined that the action is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA, and has declared its intent to act as lead agency for purposes of SECA review. In conjunction with this review of the project under SECA, the Town Board will undertake a review of the master plan for the Recreation Park Extension in order to determine whether and to what extent Red Hook’s zoning laws apply to the proposed project. and to what extent Red Hook's zoning laws apply to the proposed project, taking into the account the nine factors set forth in matter of County of Monroe versus City of Rochester as follows. One, the nature and scope of instrumentality seeking immunity. Two, the encroaching government's legislative grant of authority. Three, the kind of function or land use involved. Four, the effect land use, local land use regulation would have on the enterprise concerned. Five, alternative locations for the facility in less restricted zoning areas. Six, the impact upon legitimate local interests. Seven, alternative methods of providing the proposed improvement. Eight, the extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements. And nine, intragovernmental participation in the project development process and an opportunity to be heard. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one. All reasonable accommodations would be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone eight-four-five-seven-five-eight-four-six-zero-six, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that copies of said EAF and master plan are available for review at the office of the town clerk, Red Hook, Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, one-two-five-seven-one. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook, and they were duly published in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Freeman, it was posted on the town website, posted to Town Hall, and also emailed to the two villages, and hopefully it was posted at the villages. And that's it.
Thank you, Sue. So I would like to declare the public hearing open. Are there comments? Anyone wishing to comment?
Hi, Denise Barton, three hours from Red Hook. Some of my neighbors said they were going to be here tonight, so there might be a few more people arriving shortly. I live across the street from the houses that back up against the proposed Rec Park area, and generally we're very much in favor of it as the design looks right now. One concern that several of the neighbors who are the property owners who border the property is although the fields will not be lighted, there's concern about lighting in the parking areas and that it will not be so bright that it will be impacting the folks in their homes there, because with all the clearing that happened in the past couple of years on that field, a lot of the trees that border some of those properties are now gone. So that is a concern for some of our neighbors. And I did want to ask how long the public comment period was for, because across the street, neighbors, actually the owners live in Westchester, the resident there passed away last year, so his children live in Westchester, so I think we might want to be able to send a letter. I want to find out how long the public comment period was for.
And are they aware that the public hearing is going on tonight?
I don't know.
Okay, okay, you don't have contact with them then?
I can, but I didn't. I thought the meeting was next week, I just ran out shortly. I found that it's tonight, so we quick ran over here. So I will be contacting them this week.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments regarding the Rec Park? There are only three of us here, so we can make a decision fairly quickly, I think. The concerns that you expressed, I don't think are necessarily out of the ordinary and applying specifically to this public hearing. This public hearing has to do with our being able to declare a full environmental assessment and an EGDEC on the Rec Park without having to go through the typical processes that any applicant would go through, and we have looked at this and studied it and concerned ourselves about meeting the standards for what's called a Monroe action, and that's what this public hearing is about, yes? Is it important that we leave the public hearing open for the type of concern that Mrs. Barton mentioned that a neighbor might have in the future? Will they have another opportunity to comment?
Well, in terms of the public hearing of the Monroe, that is, you know, for, just as you said, the discussion about taking responsibility for the site plan. What we have on the agenda tonight is consideration of the SECA review for the board to go through and consideration of the Monroe. We had thought to defer the final approval of the master plan to, you know, perhaps the following meeting, and while it might not be a hearing, there'll certainly be additional opportunity for public comment to the board before you make a decision on that.
Can you hear, Chris? Okay. So in terms of your neighbors' input, there is time. If you wish to contact anyone, them or anyone else, there will be time for us to listen to further public comment. This particular public hearing goes just so far, and we will be taking additional comments, and in consideration of the neighbors as well as anyone else in town who has opinions. So if you could notify them and let them know that, I don't think that our closing this public hearing will impact hearing from them and considering what they have to say. Okay? You're welcome. Okay, any further public comment in this regard? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So would you like to help us with the staging of this, because it is a lot of paper?
So what I would like to have you look at, we have a couple of things that are graphic representations, and then we'd like to turn to the environmental assessment form. We have the original master plan.
Yes.
Which we've had for a couple of years now, which is a concept plan, which calls for the four soccer fields and the two, the south bowl and baseball fields essentially and pavilion as the Rec Park, and then trails, a system of trails and parking, and that's essentially what's going on in the site.
Excuse me, Chris, I just want to point out that there is a public folder here that has the materials we're considering. If anyone wishes to come up and take a peek and follow with us, you're welcome to take those materials. And there are maps here to just distinguish what we're talking about. I'm a picture person, so I like these maps, and they help me visualize what it is we're discussing.
It's one packet.
It's just one packet, that whole packet, yeah.
So we have a proposed concept plan, which is essentially a recent update of this master plan, and that should be in front of you, it's number C two. And that, one of the things that I would point out on that is the system of trails that will run throughout the park, and the trails have been modified from the original master plan to take into account the existence of some wetlands on the site, and to skirt the wetlands, to go around those wetlands, the trails also will include a trail that goes through a parcel that currently belongs to the Water District, and we'll be talking about that a little bit more, and that trail would skirt the wetland again and allow a buffer between that trail and the neighboring property. That's the nature of that proposal. And just while we're on this for the moment, and we've talked about this before, I think, but when the wetland was outlined, there is a small area that was identified as a wetland, which is labeled A between the two soccer fields down on the bottom right-hand side, and so the proposal would be that that, being isolated, will be mitigated as part of the plan for the site, and that the two separate wetlands labeled as B and C will be, the proposal is that those would be, essentially the A would be mitigated by connecting those two wetlands to make a larger and more robust wetland area as a better way to approach that site. So the trail now skirts all of that, so that we're not trying to put a trail through the wetland. And that's one of the things that has been worked out by John Kim, working with all the consultants working on the team. So that I wanted to call your attention to, and then you have a grading of drainage plan, and then a number of other, you know, background documents, but those are, I think, the most relevant for this discussion. Now, we have in front of you a Part Two, which was prepared by Randy Nelson Crawford for you, and I'd like to review that one at a time if we could. So that's the Part Two, Project Impacts. You may have it in the form of the back of the EAF. I think we just, it may be attached to your footage. If we could do that, we probably would have it in there, but you should also have one that is, if I can do that. Have that, if not...
I have Part One so far.
I have Part Two, it's Page eleven of twenty-one.
Right there, if you don't have it yet.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure it's here.
Page eleven of twenty-one.
So, number one, will the project, will the proposed action result in a physical change to the project site? Yes, the construction will involve more than one phase or stage, and that is in recognition of the plan to, you know, obviously from a financial perspective, this is a master plan for development of the site, it's not something that's going to be accomplished in six months, much as John would like that to happen, right, John? And number two, will there be an effect on unique or unusual landforms? No. Impact on water? Will the proposed action affect any water body designated as protected? Yes. There is a wetland, as we indicated, that was delineated, that was part of the work that John and Hisgro did, including some volunteers, I think Mark Kraminsky provided some assistance on that, excuse me. So we have developable areas containing a projected water body and construction in a designated freshwater titled Wetland, and as we indicated, the mitigation plan involves relocating the one smaller isolated area and expanding the other larger area. Will the proposed action affect any non-protected existing or new body of water? No. Will the proposed action affect surface or groundwater quality or quantity? No. Will the proposed action alter drainage flow patterns or groundwater runoff? Yes. But there will be grading of the site, and as indicated, we do have a grading plan that was prepared by engineering, and John's discussion with that consulting group led to a decision to have essentially sheet grading on the site, there won't be constructed basins or anything of that sort, it's essentially just a modest grading that will happen across the site as part of the construction of the site. Will the proposed action affect air quality? No. Will the proposed action affect threatened or endangered species? No. And I would note that we did have a report prepared by Mike Nowicki.
Yes.
Which you have in your file, and you had an opportunity to look at, relating to the endangered species, and that they indicated that there was no such species on the site. Will proposed actions substantially affect non-threatening or non-dangerous species? No. Will proposed action affect agricultural land resources? Yes. This was originally a farm property, we did acquire this, but it was not being farmed, obviously, for many years, but it was, you know, part of the decision to acquire the site, you know, was looking for, obviously, a suitable site, and it turned out that suitable sites are often flat and well-drained. Will proposed action affect aesthetic resources? No. Will proposed action impact any cider structure of historic, prehistoric, or paleontological importance? No. Will proposed action affect quantity or quality of existing or future open spaces or recreational opportunity? Yes, obviously an increase in the town's recreational area and quite a significant increase. Will the proposed action affect exceptional or unique characteristics of a critical environmental area? No. Will there be an impact to the transportation systems? No. Will the proposed action affect the community sources of fuel or energies applied? No. Will the objectionable orders, noise, or vibration as a result of proposed action? No. Will the proposed action affect public health and safety? No. Will the proposed action affect the character of the community, the positive impact in creating, I would say, a positive impact in creating additional recreational resources? But no in terms of, no additional demand for community services. Is there a likely to be public controversy? No. Now, I would like to have you turn to, first of all, Part Three also, which is prepared by Randy, or rather, I think I will show you, who also works with Crawford.
Say that again, Part Three?
Part Three, which if you take this that I handed you, it's...
Oh, it's in that one?
Yep.
Not this one?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so you're going to have that?
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be in the back of this one.
Right, it's in the back of that one. You got it, me now, but, yeah. So, the proposed action is consistent with the recommended use according to the zoning district R one point five residential, which allows for public parks and general systems. So it is consistent with zoning. The proposed action is compatible with the zoning land uses, which connects the existing town of Red Hook Rec Park to the community through a series of proposed rail systems. Certain drawings and documents have been reviewed, determined to have no significant impacts associated with proposed site development. Number one, ACO wetlands delineation plan, prepared by Mark Kraminsky. Number two, proposed grading plan, prepared by Weston Stanson. Number three, Indiana bath and bog turtle habitat suitability assessment report, prepared by Mike Nowicki. Number four, DEC Environmental Resource Map, and number five, New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Conservation Register listing. The proposed grading plan was reviewed and found to meet the Town of Red Hook setback requirements for development on this parcel for zoning district R one point five. Additional provisions for sewer and water through onsite sewage disposal, meaning a septic system for the future bathroom facilities, and municipal water connection have been reviewed and found to have no significant impact. Proposed sewer and water systems for the site shall be subject to review and approval by a Dageus County Health Department. And I would note that the proposed water connection would be a connection from the existing sewer district as an outside user across Lyndon Avenue.
Water district.
Water district.
No, not sewer, water.
Water district, thank you. Water district across Lyndon Avenue to serve the site, so it's available directly across Lyndon. Traffic impacts are considered minimal for this project, with no significant traffic generation above the present levels. The proposed expansion will also allow for additional parking on the site to accommodate additional traffic. Lighting for the ball fields is not proposed. Lighting at the parking area will be shielded, and therefore the lighting will have no significant impact on the surrounding area. Wetland impacts will be small to moderate for the site with avoidance to the extent practical through modification of the proposed walking trails. Anticipated impacts to wetlands can be mitigated on-site through creation of wetlands with an area equal to the amount of wetlands disturbed. Wetland A will be removed, that's about point one seven acres, will be removed, so that a total of point one seven acres of new wetlands must be created. A connection between wetlands B and C is the most feasible option. The connection between the wetlands will be at least point one seven acres, mitigating the loss of wetland A. All wetland impacts and mitigation measures are subject to a nationwide permit and review by the Army Corps, and that review is being, is on draw. And I would note that the lighting issue, we do have a, you know...
Have a lighting standard that requires shielded lighting, yeah.
So that should consist in mitigating the concerns about the lighting affecting the neighborhood property, but obviously that's something that, you know, needs to be taken into account.
And I appreciate that concern, because that really bugs me. If there's light in the window at night, I don't like it. If there's light in the window at night, I don't like it, so I do understand that concern in the neighborhood, and I'm sure the rest of the board will understand as well.
We have, we have two resolutions that potentially want to just go through and then consider adoption, if you would like to go through those or if you want to stop and ask.
Okay.
The first resolution is a resolution to adopt determination of non, the determination of non-significance for the recreation park extension master plan. And the, the recitations are that, that we have the master plan that we've just discussed. We prepared a full EAF and classified the action as an unlisted action and declared an intent to serve as lead agency, although the agency has objected, and that the board has considered the criteria in six NYCRR, six seventeen point seven, and NYs, relevant areas in environmental. So the resolution is now therefore be resolved and the town board hereby adopts the determination of non-significance for the recreation park extension master plan, finding that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact for the reasons set forth in part three of the environmental assessment form, and that's what we just went through.
So move?
Second.
Is there any further conversation? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
The second resolution that we have for consideration is a little longer, and this is a resolution determining application of town zoning laws to recreation park extension master plan.
Excuse me, Chris?
Yes.
Steve, can you hear Christine?
Oh, yes.
You can hear her clearly, so, so it will be picked up. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
So, the, I think that this resolution is a fairly short resolution. At the end of the recitations, the resolution is based on the foregoing, the town board finds that the master plan for the rec park extension project is immune from the application of the town zoning law. And what I'd like to do is go through this, the nine factors, one by one, with you as were stated in the resolution. So, the, the first factor is the nature and scope of the entity seeking immunity. This is a political subdivision, and the rec park is controlled and maintained by the town board, so it's the town board itself that is undertaking the action. Number two, the second factor is the encouraging government's legislative grant of authority. Again, this is a general purpose governmental entity that's authorized to establish parks and playgrounds and acquire land for playgrounds and acreage recreation centers. The kind of function or land use involved, this is the expansion of the rec park across Linden Avenue. This is an amenity provided to and used by the residents of the town, and it's a typical governmental function. In other words, it's not something outside of a normal governmental function. The effect of local land use regulation on the enterprise concerned. Should the town board find that the town's action is not immune from review, the town would need to obtain site plan approval to construct the proposed facilities. Such procedures could at a minimum result in additional costs and time delays. In addition, the town has not prepared the complete construction of the entire project contemplated by the master plan in the immediate future, and extensions of site plan approval which are needed resulting in more administrative burdens. Prior town projects have been exempted from the planning process. Number five, alternate locations for the facility in less restrictive zoning areas. Parts are permitted in every district subject to site plan review with additional restrictions in the waterfront conservation district. No area of town has less restrictive zoning regulations for this purpose, so the proposed location of the expansion was chosen due to its proximity to the existing rec park and school and access from a county road. And number six, the impact on the legitimate local interest. The town board has held a public hearing at which the public was afforded an opportunity to comment on the proposed expansion. The town board has reviewed a full EAF with respect to the proposed project. The new expansion will generate a maximum, and this is based on the engineer's assistance, the new expansion will generate a maximum of forty-six vehicle trips per hour based on the IT trip generation manual. The new fields may also result in additional noise near a residential neighborhood, but this will be minimized by closing the park it does and not lighting the fields. The town will also be maintaining an existing landscape buffer along the residential area. Number seven, alternate methods for providing the proposed improvement. There, there are no alternative methods of providing more sport fields that are easily accessible to the residents. There's a shortage of active soccer and baseball fields in the town. The school district utilizes the town's fields for athletic programs as it does not have sufficient separate recreational facilities to make sense of students. Number eight, the extent of the public interest to be served by the improvements, the provision of rec land is of great importance to the people of the town and will enable the expansion of the physical programs. And number nine, intergovernmental participation in the project development process and an opportunity to be heard. Excuse me, the proposed facilities have been a subject of discussion at a number of town board meetings over the years. This process has taken five years, John? The town board held a public hearing today to give introduced parties an opportunity to be heard. It's listed comments from the county department of planning and development, which responded that it was a matter of local concern. The planning board, DEC, Dutchess County Department of Public Works. And, so that's the substance of the reservation.
Thank you. So, Brenda, would you mind reading the now therefore, or whereas the town board is lead agency?
Not at all. Sounds like that one.
You found it?
Yep. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook by the favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board as follows. One, the proposed project is an unlisted action under SEACER. Two, the town board declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs the town clerk to send notice that it's intent to all involved and listed agencies, including the town planning board.
Brenda?
Am I on the right one?
Brenda, you're not on the right one.
Yeah.
Use the computer. Well, this is easy. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook that based on the foregoing, the town board finds that master plant for the rec park extension project is immune from the application of the town zoning law.
Is there a motion?
Aye, so move?
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that is the Monroe consideration.
What we would be looking at, I guess, for our future meeting is the, John will be reviewing, I don't know, with Doug and, and the consultants, the remainder of the substantive project documents, and we will hopefully bring that to the next meeting.
I have a question. I know the public meeting is ended, you just missed it somewhere in, could I ask some questions?
Certainly. I, I think that's fine. That's fine. Would you like to step forward?
I would.
Okay.
I'm Jim Heisberger, six Aspen Wall Road. My land immediately borders the, the property. My question is the, the land barrier. What will be constructed between the properties on Linden Avenue, and Linden Acres on Aspen Wall Road? And what kind of a berm will be put up? And what kind of separation is planned specifically?
I don't think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have a berm in mind, but landscaping would be what we, what we really expect to do is substantial landscaping between the back of the property, such as yours, and the, the field there. And there is, there is significant space between how we expect to develop the fields for, for sports use and adequate to build quite a significant natural barrier. There are, do you have one of those?
I have a map, and this area almost looks like maybe ten, fifteen feet. So that's why I'm thinking a berm of maybe eight to ten feet would provide some reduction of noise. And then with some foliage or trees on top would also reduce the amount of light coming from the parking lot area.
And those are concerns we have and want to address and will address as it is developed. I think that's more than, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's more than about fifteen feet, isn't it, between the edge of the parking lot?
Yes, more than that. Generally speaking, the berm doesn't do so much anymore because they're impossible to maintain, and they become a place where neighborhood yard waste accumulates. So what they do now is they stagger trees and things rather than building dirt piles that you can't mow because you can't run a mower over them. You know, they want things that are maintained. I was at a conference up in Saratoga, and they were talking about it, and the concept now is they like to clear the parks to their boundaries and then put in maintainable barriers, you know, foliage, trees, whatever. And then they usually, and then you bring the neighbors in, you talk about what you want. The tree committee is working on it with us, because hopefully, they're going to provide the trees. And to decide exactly what size tree, what kind of tree, all year kind of tree, or ones that will have leaves, I mean, you know, all the, all those different questions.
I've researched it a little bit too, and seen that berms do reduce the noise. They also can be architecturally pleasing if you put trees in them. So it is my concern that this is so close to this property line with the rest of my neighbors that it will be loud. We're backing up now a parking lot, and the ball field distance in the outfield is very, very close, as you can see.
Mean field, too.
To the property line, that's correct.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, it almost looks like there's absolutely no boundary there whatsoever.
Well, you might want to look at the, if you want to look at the...
There's a scale up here, and there is no way in the world I can read it.
There's also a trail between...
They might give you a better idea.
There's a scale here, but I can't read the numbers.
This is a scale here, and so, and this is, so for example, here's...
If anyone else would like to come up and take a look at this large map, please feel free to come up, because it's important that you're comfortable with it and that you give us input so that we can address your concerns. Please, please do come up and, and review.
Which? That would be, that would be where baseball equipment would be, and that's a...
The one that you're looking at, is this the one that I passed out? Yeah.
So if you look here, this is about thirty-five feet away. This is probably eighty-five feet away. Follow this line here.
Okay. I think, John, your maintenance shed is now over here, not up there, right? This is an older map, the first, this is just the wetland delineation. I'm just trying to show you a bigger map because it's easier to see on the big map.
Thirty-five feet is the width for this room.
Oh, I thought John was here. Sorry.
Sorry. But that's it, it's one inch equals sixty feet. So if you took a scale here, this is just about an inch. You're looking at sixty feet here before this parking lot starts. Here's probably the tightest area, and even that's a half inch, so that's thirty to thirty-five feet.
And this is a turnaround?
Uh, yes.
Well, that's not for traffic though, is it? I can't see.
Yeah, this is a turnaround for buses.
Is it? Is that the turnaround for the...
Well, actually, you come in here, and you look back out.
Yes, okay, I see.
This is the park, this is the park.
This is, this is a better, this is the site plan, so that's the same, yeah, okay. I know some of these little features have changed, so this is the same.
Doug, you see this?
So the same here, actually, the boundary here, there's an elevation difference, so you're actually sitting up higher than this field, but that's out. You can also see here that you're about a hundred, five, four feet away here. You start this line, it's a trail, it's just a, kind of, I don't know. I think it's wider in certain areas, you have to, you're over here.
I mean, a, a small berm in this area, just the front of these houses, it doesn't have to be ten feet, but I mean, even a eight foot or a six foot berm, looks, I'm sure something can work out there.
Yeah.
We want to be... The reduction on noise?
I appreciate your...
I can hear the rec park, like, yes, tomorrow.
No, that's why we're here. That's why we're here, to get ideas and hear what your concerns are.
That's a reasonable expectation.
That's why we're here.
I think it's important that you not be intruded upon by, by this.
Well, this one here, actually, because of the grading plan, you're actually sitting higher than this field here, with the flatteness field out. So there's, there's actually a wall that sits here, so, now, so that's...
Dropping netheryne.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah. So you're already at that, this side. And here, there's some that's come up in discussion, not only a berm, but vegetation on top of it.
If, if this is going to be a turnaround for buses, will there be some kind of a requirement for no idling of buses? I'm just thinking diesel fuels.
Well, that's what we have now, and everyone's on the same, yeah. Schools are like that now, they don't let them run, they can't, they show them down.
Buses, that'll be there would really be school buses.
It's amazing sometimes the diesel smell really does...
Oh, yeah, it's awful.
Yes, it does.
Question two, is there, are there any plans for extending the sidewalk down Linden? Because now it ends at the pool, and I'm just thinking, you know, where it goes up the hill, it's so narrow.
I know it. I know it, and we've, we've talked about that with, I can't even tell you how many people are concerned about that road and that, and that sidewalk. And the best way to negotiate that road is to go through the rec park, you know, the safest way, because there just is no shoulder there, there's none. There's none.
I'm just thinking, though, this park is going to be quite a big addition and quite, you know, to be quite an attraction, and I'm just concerned that there'll be more pedestrian traffic coming in.
Yep. We've talked about a trail in the past between the high school, or the school, I won't say high school, but the school and the rec park, and that's still a dream. If, we haven't anything material to show you, but it would be ideal. If we could move from, if we could go from there, you know, to the quiet of the school and the school roads and trails, it would be ideal.
Yeah, some of our, there's the connector trail going to Apple Ring Road, and some of our residents express concern about letting their kids go on the treadmill because it's more concealed, and they're concerned about safety.
That's, that is the other side, too. I know, I know.
Was anything posted publicly about the meeting? I mean, usually notifications with the ZVA planning board go out to notify people in proximity to a public hearing. I can't believe how few of the neighbors are here that haven't realized it. I asked people today, we didn't receive anything in the mail, you know, a notification that this is a public meeting, and this all borders, adjacent to about twenty-five people's property. I don't think there's been any idea that this is going on.
I guess it's been on the agenda and we've talked about so much on our part that we, you know, we think people follow what's happening in their neighborhood and, and...
I was just surprised to see only three of us, you know.
We're not required, I don't think we're required to do those notifications. Legally, we're not required to do those.
It was noticed in the newspaper.
But it's been noticed. Oh, yeah.
It's been the proper, proper notification.
I just was concerned, because I talked to you folks...
Yeah, because we waited a month, Jim, you know.
Why was that the last meeting? You, you posted that?
Yeah, yeah, so. But we, you know, I can assure you that we will work with you because it's, it's, it's the towns. We're trying to build something that's suitable for everybody, and, and we're going to work with you and what's going to...
I suggested to John, if they go to the property, that was my suggestion, that this would make a good...
Right.
I believe in, you know...
Careful of what you wish for, Jim.
Certainly, the rec commission should make sure we take care of the season right now.
I think that's absolutely essential, and just be, use it friendly to the immediate neighbors as well as the rest of the town.
I know that...
You can't intrude on, on, on your quality of life there.
When I was raising teenagers, I bet some of the neighbors wished I had a berm between my house and theirs. So I do understand the concern about, you know, about the intrusion of noise. I, I really do.
The berms would make a, a good boundary, you know, for noise and just line of sight. And I, I knew that nobody was planning on putting lights in, but eventually, what if lights do go? Well, not even a berm, you'll be, you'll, you'll bounce around a few.
Well, that's not in the plan now.
Lights at the current rec park, they make the lighting standard, you know, when they were installed, I would want to live next to those lights.
Right. Quite right. Well, those are, they're about thirty years old, yeah.
Oh, no, just mean the parking lots, not even, I know the lights, it's on the tennis court, they're very bright.
Well, the new light... Or the new lighting, down lighting. Still the lighting.
Maybe we should think about changing that.
It's so expensive. When they talk about shielded lighting, actual lighting has to go down. And there's only certain lights.
I don't think this park, my lighting meets our town standard. You know, all the new lighting.
Why don't they just be here? They're secure. There's a plan at this point, right?
Correct. Yeah.
The town standing standards now are all for down lighting, shielded, so it doesn't go up and, and light pollute and.
And the lighting here for the parking area, is that going to be on? Most nights, or I don't know, the plan is for that to be lit?
No, no.
No, it would only be on.
It'll be closed at dusk, yeah. There's no intention to light the field, so there's no reason for the parking lot to be lit.
Also, the parking lot will not.
And that's not my understanding.
We do because there's a fire item in there. So it's a safety. We have to keep them private. Yeah, it's called a. So there won't be any lighting, is that what you're saying? That's, at that point, that's correct. That's correct.
But it's nice. It's quality.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I was like, that's a kid that was working. I think it's probably at the street. So they.
Again, I think I would refer to this one, some of the.
Picking it up upside down.
The same as the one that's in the.
Similar, similar. I think we're thinking in terms of the snack bar being under the same roof as the pavilion, yes. And the, and the, and the lavatories and whatever, the toilets.
What's the realistic plan of, you know, the financing and acquisition?
Acquisition's been done. I mean, we've.
Of financing.
How far is up? It's something, it's a work in progress.
We're prepared for it to take years. It's not going to happen overnight, you know? It's just not. It's just not.
But this is a big step.
Yeah, it's a big step. The master plan approval is, allows us to decide what next, you know? And it's going to be staged, there's no question about it, there just isn't the money anywhere.
I was seeing the process that's gone on, clearing the field and removing stumps and processes continues to go through.
Right.
What we've talked about so far is completing the soccer field, which, which there's a real need for. And that, that really is just mostly a function of grading, not to say that it's that simple, but it's grading and grass and, and it would, we would be able to use the fields then in daylight hours only, just like the fields over on Mills Road, they're used in daylight hours.
Even the parking lot, on the skates.
Yeah.
We can start with just a ground base, just to provide for the, for the soccer fields.
We really want to work.
That's we can identify a benefactor.
Right.
Which we haven't done.
Thank you for the question.
We're happy, we're happy to work with you and please, our doors are open, tell us as we go along. Okay? Thank you all. Now, we have a resolution regarding secret.
We're going to be.
For the rec park.
Set for now, this is, this is, that's old?
Yeah, it's probably.
For the next item on the agenda, are we led to move on?
I think so.
To hydro fracking? The second item on the agenda is the issue of hydro fracking.
We had a few local laws as part of this group that we have reviewed the board and so we now have for you, prepared by Michelle Gray, the planner, the environmental assessment form and a resolution. We actually have two resolutions, a couple of resolutions. The first one is a resolution classifying the action and establishing relevancy. And that is the first one on deck. So if you want to get out of your packet, you should have a full environmental assessment form. Do you have that?
Maybe.
The front part.
Maybe.
And that is part of what, let's see, Linda should have had in your packet.
Yeah, I know.
That's a secret?
Yes.
This full environmental assessment.
Oh, okay. So far, I don't see it.
For the bribe prohibition, there is a reference.
You know what, Chris, we may have to take a moment and make copies of that because I don't see it. And I do understand there was a lot, this is very complicated and we had a lot of stuff.
We need to touch all these faces before we can set the hearing, right?
We do. We do. So would you like us to move to another topic while you, while you get?
Talk about the grant issue while I go through this?
Mm-hmm.
I think.
Is it under a different top?
No, this is what I printed out from an email, of course, it says.
All right. So I think because she wasn't here on Friday, she missed it. That's all I can do.
The grant issue is now, is five in this folder.
Yes. If we go to, if we go to tab five, let's take care of that.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, while we're, while we're assembling one more piece. Brenda, do you want to talk about this?
Me?
Yeah.
Sure. Well, this has to do with the work that the intermunicipal task force has been doing for some time and it's nearing completion and it has, is related to the protection of our historic resources. And we'll have a zoning change to better protect resources that are on the national and state historic register and that are located in a natural resources inventory that the town has done of without police acts properties and resources along the river. But there's still a lot of work to be done, so this grant would help us finish that work and we've been working with our planner on that on Friday mornings. And in addition, in the past few years, the CAC has done a lot of work on identifying more scenic roads than we have already designated and they've written narratives about those roads and there is a draft zoning change about protection of those scenic resources, so this grant would also be applied to creating zoning changes to work on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
And this is a grant sponsored by the Hudson River Valley Greenway. It's on a revolving basis. The next grant round is due May tenth and this resolution would permit the town to apply for that grant.
Mm-hmm.
It can be up to $10,000. I think most people lately are getting awarded 7,500.
So there's a 2,500 matching, matching on our part in, in services and.
In kind services.
In kind services, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so would you like to read the, the wheresses?
Sure. Whereas the town of Red Hook is applying to the Hudson River Valley Greenway for a grant under the Greenway Communities Grant Program for a project entitled Historic and Scenic Resources Protection to be located in the town of Red Hook. Whereas the grant application requires the applicant municipality to obtain the approval endorsement of the governing body of the municipality or municipalities in which the project will be located. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the town of Red Hook hereby does approve and endorse the application for a grant under the Greenway Communities Grant Program for a project known as Historic and Scenic Resources Protection and located within this community.
I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brendan. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank the CAC for us. All right, so if we would, if you don't mind, going back to hydro fracking, we'll look at this full environmental assessment form. Thanks, Chris.
Yep. Now, this is, again, this was prepared by Michelle Gray and this is, takes all three of these proposed actions. There are three local laws that are going to be part of this discussion. The first one is a prohibition of bribe on town roads. The second one is, and then chapter eighty-four of the town code, it prohibits the disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in the town. And the third is local law prohibiting heavy industry, which includes an updated definition of heavy industry, specifically including oil and gas matters. So the description of the action includes all three actions and, you know, she has prepared the, what we call the front part, the part one, to describe that and the approvals that are necessary include adoption of those three local laws, the planning board referral for review recommendation, and Detches County Planning, again, referral for review recommendation. So those are the things that we will be looking to do as part of this resolution, series of resolutions. When we set a public hearing, we'll need to refer it for those reviews. And so that's, we also have a coastal assessment form, which has been completed for this project. That's part of the fully AF that we have on file. And then we have a resolution which, is a resolution classifying the action, so that would be the first resolution to consider. And then we have a series of three separate resolutions establishing a date for a public hearing. Okay? So the first resolution recites the preparation of the full environmental assessment form and determines that there are no other involved enters our federal agencies based on the agencies identified in the fully AF. And so therefore, and determines that the action is a type one action and authorizes the supervisor that designed the EAF declares the town board as lead agency as the only involved agency and determines that a determination of significance will be made at such a time as all reasonably necessary information has been received by the town board to enable it to determine whether the action will or will not have a significant impact on the environment.
I'm sorry, Chris, the, the resolution you're going over right now is.
This is the secret resolution classifying the action and establishing.
What does it, what does it look like?
It looks like this.
This one?
That I handed out earlier, the secret.
Yeah, but they're all shuffled in here.
I know. So that one.
Thank you.
Yes. So that's the first resolution, the secret resolution. Again, it's, it's, it's not a determination of non-significance, it's classifying the action and establishing the board as lead agency determining it as a type one action. All right?
Okay, now we, we pass that individually.
Yes, so you can consider that one.
So we're ready for a motion on it?
Should they read some other?
Yes, is, is there, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, so moved.
Is there a second? Is there further conversation?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then we have a series of three resolutions. The first one is a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of local law number A proposed of 2013, local law prohibiting bribe on town roads.
Could I see that?
That is, now you should have those in your packet.
Yes, we do. We do. They're, they're slightly out of order, but they are here.
Yeah, okay. I think this is it.
If you look at the title of the local law number A.
Right.
Establishing, establishing a date for a public hearing. We're going to, okay. That's this one.
So it reads, whereas a proposed form of local law number A proposed of 2013 entitled a local law to prohibit bribe, bribe on town roads has been submitted to the town board of the town of Red Hook. Whereas on April ninth, the town board classified the action as type one action and declared its intent to serve as lead agency in the coordinated review of the project under the State Environmental Quality Review Act seeker and has prepared a full environmental assessment form dated April ninth and coastal assessment form CAF dated April ninth. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook by a favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board present as follows. The town board of the town of Red Hook shall hold a public hearing on, and we said May...
Did it want to say here?
Yeah. I did, May fourteenth, was it?
Well, yeah, because I think that.
We needed the time to get back.
Because of the zoning amendment, I think we need to have a day.
Right, right. It would be May fourteenth.
Okay.
The Tuesday, May fourteen. And I think we would say, let's say eight fifteen. There will be a presentation by the Red Hook Central School at seven forty-five. So let's say eight fifteen for this one. At Town Hall, seven three four oh South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law. And the town clerk is authorized and directed to publish a notice, Kingston Freeman, Phippsy Journal, and honor be four. And what would that date be?
About May fourth.
May fourth, okay. Which is not less than ten days prior. Okay. I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Next resolution is a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding adoption by the town board of local law number B proposed of 2013, local law in chapter eighty-four of the town code. And again, this is, looks like this.
That one?
It's B, local law B.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is the one that relates to prohibition of disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in the town. Okay? And again, for each one of these, you should have in your packet, we did have the local law last week, there's a copy of the local law.
Yes, there is.
Attached to each of the resolutions. Okay.
So similarly, the, very similar recitation. I so move that we hold a public hearing on May fourteenth, this time eight thirty, maybe eight twenty. It probably won't take that much.
Yeah, right.
Eight twenty is probably more likely to hear all interested parties on this local law B.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the front. So this is a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding adoption by the town board of local law number C proposed of 2013, local law prohibiting heavy industry. And this local law, more specifically, amends chapter one forty-three of the town code to expressly define heavy industry into include natural gas and or oil exploration, extraction and support activities, that's heavy industry. Heavy industry is not permitted in the town as it is inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The law provides additional clarification of activities which constitute heavy industry. So that's the law that we're hoping at. So this recites that what we'll need to do is refer the proposed amendments to the Department of Planning and Development of the county and that we'll also need to refer them to the planning board for their report of recommendation. Recites that the town board has classified the action as type one, declared its intent to act as lead agency and has prepared a fully AF and a CAF. And so there's a resolution to hold a public hearing on, and I guess that would be May fourteen.
May fourteenth, and let's say eight thirty this time.
Okay. And we'll.
Chris, does that, I think about that forty-five day thing for the planning board, is that, is that a problem or?
Well, I, I think we can, we can schedule a public hearing, but if we are not able to get our report back from the planning board and have the time, at least. get our report back from the planning board in that time, we'll need to defer our action until we do get that report and recommendation. So if they can get us on the agenda and consider the proposal, then, you know, we can proceed. And if not, we'll need to defer the action.
But hold a public hearing anyway.
Yeah. So, will you get started with the public hearing?
Yes.
So, and then next to publish notice, not less than ten days prior to the date of the hearing, again, that would be May fourth, by May fourth. Then the next paragraph, the town clerk is authorized to send a copy of the proposed local law together with the EAF and CAF materials to the planning board for a report and recommendation pursuant to one forty-three, one forty-one of the zoning law and pursuant to sixty-eight dash twelve C of the town code for its recommendations regarding consistency with the local waterfront revitalization plan. So we need two things from the town board. One is the recommendation as a zoning law amendment, and the second is findings under the local waterfront revitalization plan. And then next, the town clerk is authorized and directed to send a copy of the proposed local law together with the EAF and CAF materials to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for their report and recommendation under two thirty-nine M and authorized and directed to send a copy of the public hearing notice to the clerks of the adjacent municipalities. So that's that resolution.
Is there a motion?
I so move.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
So, that's, if you have other questions? We did circulate, I think, by email...
These local laws will be available at the town clerk's office and online. Yes?
Yes, absolutely. And we did circulate, or we will circulate, a copy of the local waterfront revitalization for a consistent determination form. The planning board will need to make its review and then, once we have that back, then the town board will need to review that again as well and make their own determination. So that will be part of the review process for consideration.
Thank you. I thank you.
Oh, and I will, Michelle has been preparing some backup...
Maybe she should have done these one at a time at different meetings.
As well. Part of the...
Okay.
We're going through dimensional?
Let's see. Just put on this one.
Okay, that's behind, behind three.
Behind three is the next item on the agenda.
And what we should have in that packet is, again, part one, the full environmental assessment form. And we should have, we're asking the local law for, a local law, and then it kept their one forty-three entitled zoning to make a minor adjustment to the dimensional requirements in the traditional management development zoning district. And then we should have a resolution classifying the action and establishing a lead agency. And that looks like this.
Should do this in different colored paper, I think.
And we should have a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing. Is that all sound familiar?
Yeah, I see everything that you...
Here's the public hearing. I think I found all the things you mentioned.
Got the public hearing. I've got the... I've got the EAF. I must have something, I think. Unless it's an, oh, you know, others.
It's all here. No, I don't have one.
You don't have one that looks like that? It could be part of...
No, no, that's, that's the one we just finished. Unless it's stapled to the back. Here, here, here. There it is.
Okay, that's correct. I want to make sure you have the right one.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have that one? The secret one?
This one, this one.
Yes, I have the secret. I have the secret, I have the law, and I have the public hearing, but I thought there was a fourth thing.
There is.
That's it.
I think there's more than four.
And is it, do you think maybe it's tucked into here? Because I think there was...
What else you're looking for other than this?
That's, I'm just trying to make sure she has that one. Let's see.
If necessary, we can share this.
Yeah, maybe you might want to share that one.
This was tucked around.
That's the correct, that's the correct one.
Okay, we'll show this.
Okay.
That's fine.
So you have a resolution, this is a classifying the action and establishing the town as lead agency. This is regarding the local law number D proposed of two thousand and thirteen. We have a full environmental assessment form, again, prepared by our planner, Michelle Gray, that the board has reviewed the thresholds for type-one and two actions. And after examining the EAF, the board has determined that there are no other involved and/or federal agencies on this matter. And that the town board hereby determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action that the supervisors authorized to sign the EAF and that the town board declares itself lead agency for the review of the action as it is the only involved agency. Be it for the resolve of a determination of significance will be made at such time as all reasonably necessary information has been received by the town board to enable it to determine whether the action will or will not have a sufficient effect on the environment.
Ready for a motion? I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have one more resolution, which is establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of local law number D proposed of two thousand and thirteen. And this resolution would modify the provisions of the code and make minor adjustments to dimensional requirements of ten D district pursuant to two thirty-nine M. We have a referral to the Department of Planning and Development and we also have referral to the planning board for their report and recommendation. So the resolution would be that the town board hold a public hearing on, and again, I think we need to do this in the May meeting, please have the planning...
I don't see how it can be before then. May fourteen?
And that would be, what, eight forty-five?
May fourteen at eight forty, eight forty-five maybe. Yeah, eight forty-five, I would think.
Okay, and so then, so again, May fourth to publish notice. The town, and the town clerk is again authorized to send a copy of the law together with the EAF to the planning board for their report and recommendation under the zoning law. And should we not need other VRTs? So I don't think we need to refer to other VRTs. Town clerk is authorized to send a copy to the Department of Planning for the report and recommendation under two thirty-nine M and to send a copy to the adjacent municipalities. So that's that resolution calling public hearing.
I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will note that we did prepare a, there's a public hearing notice for this one, which is separate, but we did prepare a public hearing notice for the other three fracking laws, which is a single public hearing notice, just for efficiency.
I'm looking forward to easy after this.
I'm looking forward to easy.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to easy after this. This is a lot of, a lot of shuffle.
This is the ultimate adminis trivia. Okay, yes.
Henry, Hank, are you still alive back there?
Almost.
Oh, good. I so appreciate your hanging in there with us. We are about to do the resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the proposed conveyance of an unneeded water district parcel to the town. Okay? Okay. So this resolution relates to a piece of property that has been part and parcel of the Red Hook Water District One's property. And considering the Trails, the Recreation and Trails Committee's intention to establishing a bike trail and walking trail from Aspen Wall through the Recreation Park, we are proposing that we transfer a small portion of property belonging to the Water District, to the town for those purposes. Now, somebody else might be better able to describe this action, but I think that in essence states what it's about.
And we do have a recommendation from the Coast Committee of the Lake Commission to establish that there's a bicycle trail. And I know Hank is here, we had a recommendation from the Water Board, they determined that that parcel is a vacant parcel which is unneeded for Water District purposes. And so we consulted with, actually, we had a conversation with the assessor and also with the town engineer about the buildability of the lot. And their determination is that the lot is not buildable because of the wetland. Part of the process of working through the park master plan was having a wetland delineation completed and so we have a pretty good acreage of designation of what portion of that site is a wetland. And so given the setback and given that the septic system would be required for a lot like that, it was her feeling that it wasn't a buildable lot, so that does affect the valuation of that lot and can be taken into account in the discussion of consideration. So this, this conveyance is part of the EAF and the seeker that we just discussed with the Red Hook. We included this consideration in that same seeker review, so that's already been addressed for this discussion. So this is only a public hearing on, this, this is a public hearing that is required because it is a Water District parcel and it's owned, it's owned by the town on behalf of the Water District, it is required that we hold a public hearing regarding the proposed conveyance.
Okay, is there timing that is necessary to allow this to happen?
So this is...
Thirty days or...
Not less than ten, the notice is not less than ten or more than twenty days before the hearing. So it's possible that you could do this one at the end of the month.
I would think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, she already has it.
I think that's what we tried to play, the April twenty-fourth.
I think we talked about, yeah, the Wednesday, the last Wednesday, or the fourth Wednesday? Yeah. Okay, let's, I so move.
What time was that?
April twenty-fourth, and we haven't said yet, but let's say, let me just take a peek. I think eight o'clock would be safe, yeah. There might be somebody else on, but I think it's a fifteen-minute talk. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
And...
Anything else? I think that's it as well. Harry, do you have any business to discuss?
Well, the only thing I would, I would bring up is that it has to do with our practices, more practice I think than a policy, of how we have been timing our red logic expenditures for, for equipment or anything else that is something that, something of great expense to the town that had to be bonded. And generally, we've looked at our bonding and our ability to, ability to bond and often that drove the timing when we bought, purchased things. But it's come to, come to the board, board's mind and all of us really, we've had these various discussions, that it's probably better to replace equipment when it requires replacement rather than when we consider it necessarily affordable. So I think we're going to, we've discussed with the Highway Department in particular, a procedure to evaluate the condition of the equipment and determine its replacement based on its, first, its predicted life and ultimately its determined life by evaluating the quality of the equipment as time goes on, such as the hours of operation. There, with a little bit of research, determined that there are, in the industry of heavy equipment, there are procedures to determine the remaining life in equipment. And it's something we'd like to try in, in discussions with various members of the board. We've come to that conclusion at this point. And I think that the Highway Department is in agreement with that. Would you say? Highway Superintendent? And we'll try it. We'll see how that will, how that will work. And it, hopefully, it will be a more fiscally responsible way to approach it. It's all part of the learning experience of governance, I guess.
Thank you. Brenda?
No, nothing else?
Okay. Sue?
No, thank you.
Is there any further comment from the public before we close the meeting? Hearing none. Thank you for coming. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.